Good evening. I'd like to call to order the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, City of Calabasas Regular Council Meeting. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Pro Tem Kraut, Council members Albrecht, Bazagian, and Shapiro, as well as staff. If you would like to provide public comment and are in person, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk, who's sitting right over here. If you are joining us via Zoom, please press Raise Hand.
Good evening. I'd like to call to
Or star nine if you are joining via phone, and star six to unmute yourself when the item you'd like to comment on is presented. For items not on the agenda, please wait for my announcement for oral communication and public comment. When you are called to speak, please state your name and the city you live in. You will be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. The Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be led by Girl Scout Troop thirty-two fifty-six.
May I please have your attention for a flag ceremony?
Please stand for the presentation of our colors.
Color guard, attention! Color guard, halt!
Color guard, present the colors!
Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in singing "God Bless America."
God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans, white with home. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
Color guard, salute the colors. Color guard, dismissed.
I just also wanted to make sure that everyone knew the reason that we're in Founder's Hall is because we're doing tech upgrades to all of our equipment. So we will be back in the council chambers soon, but I see some new faces here and just want to make sure everyone knew well why we were here. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We met in closed session prior to this meeting. Does the city attorney have anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session and considered two items. One is existing litigation, TNHC Canyon Oaks LLC versus City of Calabasas. And second was conference of labor negotiator regarding all unrepresented employees. The council provided direction to staff and council, but took no reportable action in either item. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to start with a very special presentation. First, we're going to start with the recognition of Charlotte Meyer for her years of service on the Parks Recreation and Education Committee. I'm so sorry. Hold on one second. We are pleased to recognize Charlotte for her service to the Parks Recreation and Education Commission from May two thousand and fifteen to December two thousand and twenty-three, including her contributions to the commission's objectives to cooperate with other governmental agencies and civic groups in the advancement of sound recreation and parks planning and programming, senior center programs, recommended plans for the acquisition, development, beautification, and maintenance of public parks and recreational area. Charlotte recommended ideas for implementation of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and advised the city council on long-range parks, recreation, and educational programs. We're so grateful for all of your service, and we wanted to thank you. I'll add some comments at the end, but I wanted to turn to my colleagues. I'll start with James.
Charlotte, you are the perfect person for the position with your background and experience. You're one of the most experienced beginning commissioners that we've ever had with your two terms on the school board and your many, many years of activism within the community on behalf of education in particular. So the accolades are all very well deserved. I'm glad to see your family here with you, and congratulations on your service.
Peter?
Yes, again, congratulations, Charlotte. You know, ever since I've been on council, you've never hesitated to bend my ear. You always have something worthwhile to say, something we should be looking at differently, something that needs to be considered that has been overlooked. You're just an elegant voice for the community, and we really appreciate all that you've done.
David?
I'm just busy looking at Charlotte smiling. And again, joining my colleagues, everyone, and thanking you for your years of hard work. I go back always to your great, great job of bringing about the tech help program, bringing together our students and our seniors, and providing a great needed opportunity for everyone to get some help. Your great work on the parks, as James mentioned, your service on the school board, the superintendent's advisory board as well, and so much more. Thank you, thank you, and thank you. It's not enough, but it's what we can do right now.
Ed?
Charlotte, you're such a special person in this, this community, your service to the city. You're almost like the ever-ready battery of information and energy. I've enjoyed working with you on many committees, especially watching the senior center grow from a little seed to a huge tree, and it's just great. And a lot of the methodology and ease of growing that center in an organized way, in large part, you had a big part to do with it. So the accolades can fill a book. So think very highly and love you and thank you. It's a well-deserved honor.
Thanks, Ed. And I just wanted to add that in addition to all of your work on the Parks Recreation, the pre-commission, what I think is so special is that you bring a voice. You represent the voice from the senior center, but also that as a parent and a grandparent in the community. And that's what's so important, that you can look at things from a really unique and broad perspective, which is what we need as we're trying. You are just as much of an advocate for senior programs as you are for programs for getting our parks open and our younger kids, and I'm really grateful for that. And I love when you come outside of your commission role to our council meetings and share your opinion and your emails and everything. So I know that that will continue. No, it's really, it's advice that we all really appreciate. It's a very thoughtful voice. So thank you and congratulations on this well-deserved honor. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this presentation? Wait, is there someone? If there's anyone who wants to speak on this, please present a card. With that, I'm going to present Charlotte with a certificate. Yeah. You guys, everyone.
Carol Davis and Kathy Mattson, they serve with me on the advisory board. My daughter, Susie Cooper, who took my picture. My son-in-law, Jason, Jason, where are you? Jason Wilder, who is a triathlete. One of the, yeah, 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 yeah. And my husband of fifty-five years, Alan Meyer. I'd like to just briefly talk for a few minutes. I said I was going to talk for two, but, but I was told I can talk for three. I want to thank the city council for dedicating a seat on the Parks Recreation and Education Commission to one person who would represent the savvy seniors, and that one person turned out to be me. It's been an honor to be asked to serve in the capacity and to be recognized this evening. This position, plus the creation of the Senior Center Advisory Board, enabled the seniors to have a voice in the governance of their programs and the governance of the senior center. We were given permission to think outside the box. You trusted our good judgment and gave us the freedom to be creative. Our efforts were rewarded as we were recognized by the National Council of Senior Centers four times out of seven years for excellence in programming. I have been congratulated lately for my hard work. It would be misleading to say, because it was not laborious work at all. It was anything but. It was fun. It was gratifying. It filled my days with opportunities to share new ideas. Working with my friends, we pounced on these new ideas, and we turned them into new programs. These programs we listed in our catalog called "The Premier." Because of the council sharing a vision with us and confidence in our savvy senior wisdom, every senior in Calabasas and our neighboring communities have a welcoming place to go and enriching programs to enjoy. Thank you.
We are also pleased tonight to recognize Richard Sherman for his service to the Communications and Technology Commission from December two thousand and fifteen to December two thousand and twenty-three, including his contributions to advise the city council on various matters relating to the city's cable television franchises, video services, telecommunications issues, communication technology, and other relevant emerging technologies. In addition, reviewing and approving wireless telecommunications facilities. Thank you very much for your service. Are there any comments from my colleagues? David, since he was your appointee?
Sure. I will thank you, Richard, for your eight years of service on the CTC Commission, and you did a tremendous job. I know you worked tirelessly with our staff. You worked in order to reach out to the telecom companies and industry to help make our, both our wireless and our broadband better in the city. And you did, I know, a lot of hitting your head against the wall sometimes. I'll put it that way. And I know this has nothing to do with the mayor's speech, where she said this year there will be cell service throughout our city, that you're leaving the CTC Commission. But thank you for your years of service and dedication. I appreciate it.
Ed?
Richard, I don't know where to begin, but I could go on. And I won't go on, because it'll take all night. You're such a special person, above everything. I was very fortunate to meet you under unusual circumstances, when we did have our senior center building. We needed a committee to organize things, and there were a lot of women and two men, and it was you and I. And I was so glad, because it gave me an opportunity to get to know you better. You're such a quality person, and we really benefit on so many levels to having you in our city. You're a great friend and a great father, and I look forward to our continued friendship for many, many years.
Peter?
Richard, you again are another fine example of what Calabasas community looks like. Obviously, we've, we've known you on the CPHA and your other roles there, where you've served your local homeowners association. But it's always impressive to see how involved you are in the greater community. Obviously, we don't get to see too much of what goes on at the CTC meetings, because you guys resolve everything there, and they never end up coming before council. So that speaks volumes to the work that you've done and, and all the years that you've put in. I look forward to seeing you in so many other roles, because I'm certain you're just not going to fade into the sunset here.
James?
Richard, I too want to congratulate you for your service, but also note, like everyone else has, that you've served the community in so many different ways, from president of our largest homeowners association to the senior center, and now you're moving, and the community center, and now you're moving on to another role. So I'm sure you're going to remain very active in the community, and congratulations on your service on CTC.
And I will just echo, congratulations. And you really did serve CTC in such a great capacity, and really looking at issues that we might not think of, expanding programming and just trying to really evolve the commission. So you did a great job on that, and we're very appreciative. So with that, we're going to present you with a certificate. So, oh, are there any comments, members of the public wishing to speak on this presentation?
I don't have any cards, Madam Mayor.
Great.
agenda tonight, because I really wanted it to be just for Charlotte. But I do want to thank Mike Russo and Arvin Petrus and all the Communication Technology Commissioners. And as council membership here, I'd say, well, while I may be leaving CTC, I'm still hoping and optimistic that great cellphone coverage will happen throughout Calabasas, hopefully this year. Thank you again.
Next up, next up, we have our sheriff's crime report from October two thousand and twenty-three from Deputy Di Matteo.
Good evening. Okay, so, yes, I do have the crime report for October. October was a busy month for crime. There were forty-three Part One crimes for that month. We did have two armed robberies. Let me just give you some details about those, so you know what's going on. On October twelfth at nine a.m., a theft occurred from a retail establishment on Agora Road. One adult suspect, a Los Angeles-area transient, stole bottles of alcohol, and during the course of that theft, threatened an employee with force, turning that simple theft into a robbery. He was located several minutes later at a adjoining business and taken into custody for those charges. Next day, October thirteenth, at six p.m., Glendale residents exited their vehicle and were immediately approached by four masked suspects with firearms. These suspects presented firearms and pistol-whipped the victims, causing lacerations to their head, and then stole their very expensive wristwatches. This case was picked up by our Sheriff's Major Crimes Bureau for the severity of it. So for details about that crime and follow-up, none are available at this time. We did have three assaults. One of those occurred on October thirteenth also. We had an individual who was causing a disturbance in the library and refused to leave. An onsite security guard then escorted that individual out of the library, and that individual then went into City Hall irate at staff, for whatever reason. The security guard approached him and then was attacked by this, by this individual. And this individual armed himself with a shard of glass at one point, but was subdued and taken into custody. We did have another assault on October sixteenth at ten p.m. The assault occurred in the area of Los Virginus Road and Rondell Street. Two male adults began arguing after a recreational sporting activity. During the argument, one of the suspects drove his vehicle at the victim, striking him in the leg. However, that individual did not require medical attention. A third assault occurred on a deputy during a traffic stop. A deputy was assaulted in the traffic stop. The suspect fled in a vehicle, and that investigation is still ongoing. Deputy is fine. We did have nine residential burglaries, five commercial burglaries, six vehicle burglaries, five grand theft incidents, and six petty theft incidents, five thefts from unlocked vehicles, and two stolen cars. There was also an arson that occurred on October eighteenth, five a.m. Another Los Angeles-area transient started a fire in front of a business on Agora Road. L.A. County Fire was able to extinguish the fire promptly, causing a minimal damage of about five hundred dollars to that business. That individual was arrested for arson and other charges such as identity theft. Now, last thing to cover, Flock. So I'm just going to discuss it, what Flock is. So Flock is a camera system used by law enforcement for two different things. It's going to be for proactive policing, so when cameras read your license plate in the city, and you are in a stolen vehicle, you have stolen license plates, you're a kidnapping suspect, and so forth. Deputies in their vehicles will get alerted to you passing by that specific area, and we can go and look for you. It's also used for investigative purposes. So once a crime is committed, and deputies are unable to locate a suspect for that crime, detectives can go back and utilizing this Flock system, track you down. For example, I'm sure everybody here is aware of an incident that happened down the street from the sheriff's station, where a man with a stroller was in the middle of the street, and he got sucker punched from behind. Well, that individual was caught because of Flock. All right? So that guy was tracked down the following day and promptly taken into custody, utilizing that technology. So that's what Flock is. Flock is in the city. There are various cameras throughout the city. It's very beneficial to law enforcement and keeping the public safe. And so for, for numbers for Flock, so the system has some limits when it comes to searching. So I couldn't go back to October and count how many license plates were read during that month. It only gives me the last thirty days, because after that, it purges those reads. So we had, for the last thirty days to this date, we had three hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty license plates read. That, and so if you take that as an average, three hundred thousand a month, we had two hundred and nine, two hundred and nine hits, Flock hits, of stolen vehicles, stolen license plates, and so forth. So Flock is an extremely beneficial tool for law enforcement, and I will continue to give you reports at every city council meeting for that. Any questions, comments, or concerns about this report?
I'll start with Ed.
Thank you very much for the report. Really appreciate you bringing up Flock and having it as a regular source of information for us. I'm so glad we've expanded it and happy to see that the whole region is bringing it in. So it's really a blanket of security on one level. But I have a couple of quick questions for you.
Sure.
With all that's going on, there seems to be a trend that crime is going down, the Part One crimes. So it's good to see. Maybe we get some notoriety for some of the big ones that come in from open space, but it's nice to see, and it's only because of your efforts at Lost Hills and helping curb that. So I'm glad to see that. That's both, it was on for, this year was down twenty point nine percent, and then also the change for property crimes, it looks like it was down sixteen percent, so really good. So I'm going to switch gears for one more question, because I've been meaning to ask this for a while, under the community criminal issues, and it's got to do with juveniles. Because I know you work a lot with the schools. So it's a toughie. But item six, enter juveniles into the youth diversion program for various violations. So could you explain a little bit about the criteria for those violations? Or if you can't, you can't.
Mr. Albrecht, you got me. So I don't know that answer. So I try and stay away from juveniles. That is a, we have deputies specified to handle those types of incidents. They are called the J-Team deputies, juvenile detectives. They are the experts when it comes to juveniles. I am not. If you would like the J-Team to attend a city council with me, so you can ask them those questions, we can arrange that.
I don't need to drag them down. I could like to talk to them, though.
Perfect. We can arrange that.
That would be great.
Sounds good.
Great report.
Thank you.
David?
Thank you, and thank you for that report. And I won't go into great detail. I'll just say, I've been getting texted since the New Year, someone who had a theft in, in town, and, and was very happy to text me tonight, that the vehicle was already located within a week. And I'm sure it has something to do with Flock cameras and the great work done by the sheriff. So thank you for your great work keeping us safe. And as always, I'll ask any suggestions. I know we're the new year, everything is starting over in two thousand and twenty-four, but what you might suggest to the public or recommend to help keep them safe and items safe, probably safe.
February twelfth, can I bring that up?
Yes.
We're going to have a public safety symposium February twelfth, I believe, in this room. I know you guys are probably going to touch on that later, but we're going to be talking about just that, public safety, how to keep yourself safe, current crime trends, and what you could do to protect yourself from becoming a victim. So if you're available, February twelfth, I believe, what time is it?
Six o'clock.
Six p.m. Show up to that. The captain of our station will be there. Lieutenants and sergeants from our detective bureau will be there. There's going to be a lot of good information, and I highly recommend it.
Thank you. Peter?
Deputy Di Matteo, I just want to say thank you. I can never get enough of you. I want to thank you as well for coming out to the Calabasas Park Homeowners Association meeting last night virtually, and sharing much more information in much greater detail. And for those of you in the audience tonight, just want to let you know that this deputy has been serving our been serving our community for a long, long time, and he's always available, and we just really appreciate it. Thank you.
James?
I don't have anything. Thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, thank you so much for being here, and I know we're going to discuss how to keep your property safe and everything on February 12th, but until then, please, please, please make sure that you lock your house, use your alarm, use your cameras, and make sure the backside of your property is just as secure as the front side. Open space burglaries are still a thing in this community, and if you live in a gated community, you are not immune to that. Everyone in this community needs to take precautions to make sure that your home and your property stays safe. So, please join us on February 12th, 6:00 to 7:30. We're going to have tons of great information, and the entire community is invited. And Mason, as always, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on the sheriff's crime report?
I don't have any cards, Madam Mayor.
Great. Thank you. I am actually going to recuse myself from the next item on the agenda, and Mayor Pro Tem Kraut will handle that portion of the meeting.
Well, we're on to new business item number one, which is consideration and approval of appointment of Richard Sherman to the Parks Recreation and Education Commission. Are there any council questions or comments before we begin? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. Can I have a motion to appoint Richard Sherman to the Parks Recreation and Education Commission?
Just move.
Moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Councilmember Albrecht. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. I assume you abstained?
I abstained.
All right.
But I would have voted yes.
I'm sure you would have. That's why you have to abstain.
Yes.
All right. So, now I'd like to, it's my privilege to administer the oath of office to our newly appointed commissioner. Richard, could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
Aye, Richard Sherman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say first, I was hoping that Charlotte would have stayed for another year, but, and she encouraged me and supported my being nominated for this, and I appreciate the advisory board that supported this nomination. And it will be hard to fill, Charlotte really did an amazing job, as we talked about. I'll do my best to represent the seniors on the praise. So, thank you all.
And I'll now turn the mayor, I will now turn the meeting back over to the mayor.
Thank you. We're going to start with council announcements. Mayor Pro Tem Kraut.
Sure, I have two announcements tonight. The first one is that the 2023 homeless count for L.A. County is beginning. It'll be on January 23rd here in the city of Calabasas. If you're interested in participating, we're always looking for volunteers to show up, working in pairs, driving along our city streets and public ways, helping count those that are less fortunate than us, that don't have a home to go home to. If you want to sign up, you can do so at theycountwillyou.org. Again, that's theycountwillyou.org. And hopefully you'll pick the Calabasas as the jurisdiction you want to work in, and you can come join the mayor, myself, and others who might be there for that event. The second thing I wanted to announce tonight is that on Saturday, January 27th, we're having a Lost Virginous Creek Tour. The city of Calabasas engineers will be providing a tour of the creek and a lot of information about the things that we've done to improve our Santa Monica Bay watershed. So, hopefully you can come join us. More information can be found on our city website, but it begins at 10:00 o'clock.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht?
Were printed out and left on my printer at home. So, I was going to mention the public safety meeting, which I think everybody would enjoy attending, and also the creek side, because I'm looking forward to that. I've never done that before. I'm going to bring my little dog, so she can enjoy it too, and maybe he'll join us with pets. Pets, they'll feel at home. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bazagian?
Yes, I wanted to announce two hiring events that we're having for our community service departments, recreation attendants and lifeguards. They're going to be at Juan Batista de Anza Park, Tuesday, January 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and Saturday, January 20th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And so, come by and see what positions are available and if you'd be a good fit for the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you. First, I want to wish everybody here and watching, happy, healthy 2024. And a couple announcements. I'll try and keep them spread out throughout my announcements, but Calabasas High School boys' sports teams, the boys' soccer and boys' basketball teams are off to great starts. So, if you get a chance to see them, they're playing tremendously and representing well. Next, I want to mention a Calabasas Mayor's Youth Council event, which is February 3rd. It's a ways off, but it's a body positivity fair, and it's going to be fantastic. It's going to be right out here, Civic Center Plaza, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And there'll be more information. There's more information on our website about that as well. And Monday being, this Monday is a holiday, national holiday, Martin Luther King Day. I want to give, read one of his more famous quotes that's certainly apropos now, and that would be, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that." Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. I wanted to announce that this weekend, there is going to be road closures from Saturday, on Saturday, January 13th, starting at 6:00 a.m. through Sunday, January 14th, supposedly at 6:00 a.m., but it could last much longer. And this is because SCE will be performing work on the power pole and electrical and communication facilities near Wild Walnut Park. So, Mulholland Highway and East Olapanga Canyon will be closed. So, avoid that area. It will be a complete road closure. You will not be able to get through. So, the detour would be going the long way over Lost Virginous. And there's more information about this on our website. And another thing that David and I wanted to share was that this Sunday marks a very sad day. It's 100 days since October 7th, and it's 100 days that hostages are still being held in captivity. And a wonderful Calabasas resident has organized a group, and they walk every single Friday until the hostages are released. But on this Sunday, they're meeting in front of the Calabasas Library to show awareness and support for the families of the hostages. Many people in this community have relatives and friends who have been held hostage or released. So, we will be there to show our support. Thank you. And now, we are moving on to oral communication, public comment. Are there any, let's see, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on non-agenda items?
You have a bunch of cards, ma'am, and we do have one hand, two hands on Zoom.
Okay.
Do you want to hear them first?
Sure.
First, we have Harry Vox. I'll bring him in.
Good evening, counsel. Can you hear me?
You have three minutes.
Can you hear me okay, counsel?
Yes.
Okay, so first, I wanted to respond to the sheriff that was speaking earlier. It's obviously not an agenda item that I feel was numbered or whatnot, but I do kind of find it a little bit suspect that we have a security system that's watching everybody and surveilling everybody. I understand that people like to feel safe, and you know, people want to say that, you know, security cameras are good and whatnot, but my concern is they can be used for evil things as well, like if there's another COVID lockdown and people are on lockdown and they decide to, you know, see who's been driving around. So, I think that someone needs to keep an eye on that, make sure that we keep people on their Ps and Qs, and that it's not abused. Also, I would like to mention the fact that you guys gave praise to the hostages. I hope that's referring to both.
Your comments are off the topic and outside the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Please cease disrupting the meeting, and you will be removed now. Thank you. Do we have another comment? Weaver, and please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Weaver. I am a three-year resident of Calabasas. Am I okay to go?
Yes.
Perfect. I would like to ask the city council to please get in touch with the local law enforcement in order to do some reconnaissance and some searching around the local synagogues, just to make sure we don't have any child rape and sacrifice tunnels.
Your comments are off the topic and outside the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Please cease disrupting the meeting. Actually, you're being removed now. Now, we're going to move on to in-person public comments. When you please come to the microphone, please state your name and your city of residence. I'm going to start with Mark Levinson. And we have a lot of public comment cards, so try to keep everyone's comments concise and within the timeframe.
Thank you. I will keep mine very brief.
Thank you, Mark.
And Happy New Year to everyone, first of all. The 27th of this month, the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce is holding its annual installation and gala. It's going to be at the Country Club. We're having Casino Night there, which has been a great event for us the last couple of years. People stay late and don't want to leave. There's also music, awards, and a fun evening. And then the 18th of this month, there's a lunch at the Cambria Hotel, and Core Family Office is presenting an update of what's happening with the school district around, and it's an opportunity for everyone to learn about Core and at the same time, get an update what our schools are doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark. Our next speaker is Charles Harris.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name is Charles Harris. I'm a relatively new member of the Calabasas community. I'm here to speak in support of Nick and Dana of Atmosphere Catering at the Calabasas Tennis Center. We are close friends of mine since I've moved here three years ago. I met Dana and Nick at the pickleball and tennis courts at the tennis center, and being a new member of the community, I didn't know many people here in Calabasas. I found them to be both warm and inclusive, and many of the current people in my network of friends, I've met through my association with them. I spend quite a bit of time at the tennis center, and anybody who does spend a lot of time there knows that Nick and Dana are both fixtures at the club and an important part of that community. And in my experience, they are well-liked by everybody and have deep roots and close relationships with literally hundreds of members of the club. Besides my close friendship with them, I've also used them to cater multiple events at my own home. I've always found them to be straightforward, fair, amenable, reliable, and easy to work with. And of course, the food is always delicious and the presentation impeccable. And so, I think the fact that their contract has not been renewed at the club is a huge loss for the club and the entire community of members. I'd just like to spend the balance of my time reading a letter from a client of Dana and Nick's of Atmosphere Catering, a client that couldn't be here today. Dear, and this is from Kelly Miller, who's a co-founder and director of the Calabasas Film Festival. Dear city council members, I'm writing to express my support for Atmosphere Catering. It has been my pleasure to work with them during the Calabasas Film Festival in the past three years at the Tennis and Swim Center. Throughout the three years of our partnership, Atmosphere Catering has consistently demonstrated a commitment to excellence in both the quality of their food offerings and the level of service provided. I would like to emphasize that in the three years of our collaboration, we have never encountered any issues or concerns with Atmosphere Catering. Their culinary expertise and dedication to delivering high-quality meals have significantly enhanced the overall satisfaction of our attendees. Their team has always been attentive, responsive, and professional, ensuring that our patrons not only enjoy delicious food, but also receive prompt and courteous service. Thank you for your consideration. And that's from Kelly Miller. Thanks for your time this evening.
Next up is Jen Kaplan. And just so we can keep things moving along, after Jen will be Luz Tapia.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm also here in support of Atmosphere Catering.
And if you could just say your city of residence, too.
Oh, I live in Calabasas.
Thank you so much.
I just am here in support of Atmosphere Catering. As what Charles said, I am a member of the Tennis and Swim Center here, and we have had such a great relationship with Atmosphere Catering. They have catered my parties. Their food is amazing. They are responsible, dedicated workers. My daughter has worked for them, and they've just, she's had the greatest experience, and I can't say enough good things about them. I don't want to take up too much of your time, so I just want to read also a letter from somebody that can't be here in support of them. This is from Tony Hashemi from Sharkey's Calabasas, and he's saying that he's in support of Atmosphere Catering. Dana and Nick, they started 11 years ago. The center, when they started, the center completely changed. They brought a ton of energy, great food, and amazing service. The whole role and family is very involved at the center, tennis, pickleball, and the gym. It has been a pleasure to work with them on different events, as well as enjoying the cafe during the summer and pro tennis tournament. It would be a huge detriment to the center to not have them taking care of us. At Tennis Socials, they provided amazing food, signature cocktails, and a fun atmosphere. Please reconsider your termination of their contract. My family and my tennis buddies will be very upset if the contract termination is not revised, as will my family and myself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And after Luz, we'll have Gigi Dao.
Hi. Happy New Year. My name is Luz Tapia. I work for-
And if you can just say your city of residence, please.
I live in Silmar, California. I worked for Atmosphere Catering since 2006. For Dana, I work as a server. So, when they got the contract here, I've been here since the beginning, and it's been a wonderful experience all around, everything from the actual service of working for Dana and as well as the community. I wanted to talk because I wanted to represent the workers, the ones that benefit financially from the cafe, and I am one of them. I also am going to read a letter. It's written, it comes from a member of the Calabasas Swim and Tennis Center for 14 years, and the person is a resident of Hidden Hills for 14 years, and their name is Kim and Jeff Kaisler. January 10th, 2024, City Council of Calabasas, we are writing a letter on behalf of Dana and Nick Rowland and their company, Atmosphere Cater- we are writing a letter on behalf of Dana and Nick Rowland and their company, Atmosphere Catering. We have been clients of Atmosphere Catering for 10 years and would highly recommend the catering services. They are incredibly efficient, professional, courteous, and generous. Not only have they catered events at our home on a personal level, but they also catered events at CHLA, La Cañada Flint Ridge Charity Events, a couple of times. All the events went so well and the guests were very happy with the food and the service. Additionally, they are fundamentally, they are fundamental aspects of the food service at the Calabasas Swim and Tennis Center. In fact, our daughter Lauren worked at the cafe as well as various catering events, both on and off-site. She learned so much while working with Dana and Nick. The quality and level of service they have provided to numerous tennis camps, tennis tournaments, family nights are matchless. The attention to detail for the multitude of lunches that were provided to every camper is so impressive. They are an outstanding local business and we are very fortunate to have them in our community. If they were to be asked to leave the center, they would leave behind a very big void that we're sure would not be easily filled. Sincerely, Kim and Jeff Kaisler. I just wanted to add that Dana, Atmosphere Catering Events is a team.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate them. After Gigi, we'll have Stephanie Sanders.
Hello, my name is Gigi Diane. So I have a very strong accent. I lived in Woodland Hills for 20 years at the border of Calabasas. I know Nicola and Dana for more than 10 years, I guess 15, I think. They are amazing friends. They like to put people in the community. Their business for me, I think, is amazing because they do healthy food. And I think in America, it's good to have very fresh and healthy food. And I think they bring this to the area. And so I really wish I'm going to stay here. Also, I have a letter that somebody could not attend the meeting today, so I'm going to read it for her. It's Linda Perry. So I'm going to read her letter. I have had the opportunity to know Dana and Nicola Rowland at Atmosphere Event and Catering for over 10 years. Sorry, 10 years. I have also had the opportunity to attend many beautiful events that they have catered over the years and multiple venues in the greater Calabasas area. They have always done an exceptional job with their full service catering and event planning company for both small events and large events that Calabasas still, Style Magazine has covered over the 10 years, over the years, sorry. Additionally, Dana and Nicola have been active with the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce and have a great reputation within the community. And I agree with that. I also know that they have been a huge asset to the Calabasas Tennis and Swim Center over the past 11 years and hope that they will be allowed to continue as the official catering company serving this great community venue. Yes, it is Linda Perry from the Advertising and Marketing Director of Calabasas Style Magazine. Yep, that's it. So have a good evening and Happy New Year.
Thank you so much. And after Stephanie will be Richard Gensouch. I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's names.
Hi, good evening, Council. I'm Stephanie Sanders and I've been a resident of Calabasas for 30 years. So day one, since I was born. And I would like to say you're often a product of your parents raising you. And I think in addition to that, my community raised me. And part of that community was working for Dana and Nick with Atmosphere Catering 11 years ago. I was a young kid. She trusted me. They taught me order, strength, strength resilience, and hard work ethic. This community has been brought fireworks, spectacular events with their catering services, and lakeside parties, Fourth of July celebrations, lunches for tennis campers, many of our kids that go to the Swim and Tennis Center. And they're my role model. I think it would be a shame to have them not have their renewal of their contract here because we need role models for more people to have jobs in this catering company. I have a son now. I would hope that he has a summer job when he turns 14, as an intern somewhere, whatever. But they're the reason I am where I am today. I'm now an operations manager of a Fortune 100 company. And she and him taught me that. So yes, please consider their renewal of their contract. I'd also like to share a letter of someone who couldn't make it from Bob Epstein, who's the president of Aussie Rescue SoCal. This is an advise you to have my support for Atmosphere Events and Catering, who for the past 11 years have had a contract with the city of Calabasas to operate at the catering facilities of Calabasas Tennis and Swim Center. I have personally known Dana Nicholas Rowland for over 20 years. During this time, they have catered a number of events for me personally. I've also attended a number of events at the Calabasas Tennis and Swim Center at which they provided the catering. I've always known them to be highest moral and ethical character and quintessential professionals in their field. I've also found the quality and selection of their food to be excellent. Prior to leading Aussie Rescue SoCal, I was practicing attorney for over 30 years. During such time, I represented the Rowlands and Atmosphere Events and Catering in a number of business matters. I always found them to be honest and forthcoming in all aspects of our relationship. I encourage the city of Calabasas to renew their contract with Atmosphere Events and Catering. If you are interested in discussing this, please reach out. Again, this is from Bob Epstein. Thank you for your consideration today.
Thank you so much. After Richard, I have Dana.
Hi, I am Ricardo Herskovic. I've been enjoying the cafe for over 11 years, weekends with my family. And Dana and Nick have provided some way for our family to spend weekends together there, making them very nice for us. We, my family and I would like for them to keep the business there so we can enjoy plenty more weekends with them. I also want to read a letter from somebody that is not here, directed to the City Council of Calabasas from Steve Brevidoro Insurance Agency. I am writing this letter in support of the Rowland and Atmosphere Catering. Not only do I do business with them, providing them with property liability and workers' compensation insurance, but I work with them personally. Dana and I serve on the board of directors together for the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce for several years. We worked side by side on many events where Atmosphere provided the catering and coordinating the wine tasting event, the chamber put on for many years. Not only is their food spectacular, but their staff is always courteous and on top of their game. Dana and Nicholas have taken their small catering business and brought it to new levels by providing fantastic food at events and at the cafe during the pro tennis tournament year after year, as well as over the past 11 summers. My hope is that you take a closer look at their contract and renew it so they can continue to grow their business and serve the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I have Dana and Nick.
Can we use our six minutes together? Since we're both at the same time?
Well, it's three for you and then he happens to be the next speaker.
Can he defer to me?
I'll defer to our city attorney.
Additionally, we don't allow people to mix time like that. It's three and three. I defer back to the council given the situation.
We own the company together, so we thought I would just speak on behalf of both of us.
Well, let's just, let's start. So let's just start.
That sounds good. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, and city staff. We're here tonight to garner support to reverse the termination of our contract with the city at the Calabasas Tennis and Swim Center. We've been in contact with the city for just over 11 years. As most of you know, we've provided catering services, cafe services, and event services to the city, former mayors and council members, LVUSD Schools, Topse Tennis Academy, Calabasas residents, as well as those not residing in Calabasas, at the Tennis and Swim Center, Founder's Hall, Senior Center, Calabasas Community Center, and throughout the community of private residences. We are also highly involved at the center on a personal level. Tennis, pickleball, the gym, and the pool, as are our children. In fact, I started the whole concept of open play at pickleball at the center. I have a petition with many signatures from supporters requesting the termination of our contract, that our contract be reversed. Additionally, obviously, there are supporters here who are speaking on behalf. We have worked hard to provide grapefruit at reasonable prices, both for the cafe as well as catered events. Throughout our time, more than half of the kitchens failed repeatedly and has not been repaired. We've lost over $1,000 worth of food that spoiled due to these failures. The equipment is so old, there aren't even technicians old enough to know how to repair it. We even brought in our own refrigeration equipment. However, we've been told over the past few years that the equipment will be replaced. To assist Jeff Campbell, the manager at the club, because he's super busy, I was asked to research equipment, measure, speak with building and safety, find a kitchen architect, as well as speak to the health department in order to get the ball rolling. I spent well over 25 hours of my time doing so, yet nothing's been done. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Campbell informed me about a month ago that things were going to get started and he was excited for us. Then we get the termination letter. In August of 2022, Ms. Green put out an RFP for our contract. We decided that maybe it was time to move on, since it seemed clear that she didn't want us to sit there anymore. We spoke with Mr. Campbell and he requested that we stay and apply. We were the only ones that applied. Our application was professional, inclusive of all information requested, and future forward. Yet Ms. Green did not grant us the contract. Instead, Ms. Green removed the exclusivity clause of our contract at the center, then allowing people who rented the center to bring in their own food. To this day, we don't understand how one is able to change an existing contract unilaterally, especially when it was an extension of an existing contract. But we were told by Mr. Campbell to sign it or leave. However, I do want to say that Jeff Campbell has been amazing to support us and does an amazing job at the center. The lack of air conditioning in the kitchen, as well as the barely working ventilation system, has caused two of our cashiers to faint, as well as two cooks to quit last summer. Yet we stray, so we stayed and tried to make it work. The last time the cafe was open was on October 7th for movie night. Guests were angry that it was taking the food so long to get served. These delays were caused by the lack of working equipment. Half of our equipment does not work, yet we stay and we try to work and we do our best. We received a letter of-
I'll let you continue for three minutes.
Thank you. We received a letter of termination written by Kindan Meek dated December 2023 via email from Erica Green. In the letter, Mr. Meek said to reach out to him directly if we had any questions. I emailed him immediately upon receipt of the email. I also called his office requesting an in-person meeting, where I was told that he wouldn't have time for us as Christmas holiday was the next week. Mr. Meek contacted me via email late on December 23, 2023. Wherein, he stated, and I quote, "Thank you for reaching out and requesting an in-person meeting. In regards to the termination of your contract at the Tennis and Swim Center, I read the incident report and your response to the incident thoroughly. If there's information that I need to consider other than that was already been presented, please email the details that may have missed. Once I receive that from you, I will determine if there's a need to meet." I responded saying that I've never been able to read the incident report, nor did I ever submit a response. In fact, I was never spoken to about an incident report at all. Per my conversation with Mr. Campbell yesterday by phone, he stated he was explicitly told to file the incident report without speaking with me about the incident. I've requested a copy of the incident report. However, the city clerk's office responded with a letter denying my request due to, quote, "harassing conduct of city employees," end quote. Per Mr. Campbell, the incident did not involve any city employee. The way this incident reported, report has been handled and filed is an authoritarian tactic that is devoid of any sense of fairness or democratic process. We do understand that our contract states that either side can terminate without reason. However, if the reason is an incident report with misinformation, then we believe that the termination should be reversed. We are an integral part of the center, as you can tell by all of our supporters tonight, at the schools and within the community as a whole. We hope to be able to continue at the center with a kitchen that is up to code, with full working equipment, and with the support of those that work at the center and at the city. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up will be Daryl Ballin, followed by Rachel Warner.
Thank you and Happy New Year. I've known Dana and Nick. I've known Dana forever, literally forever. About 54 years and I've known Nick for well over 20 years. And I've enjoyed their food over the years, their company, and their energy and all their other attributes that they bring to the Swim and Tennis Center and also Calabasas at large and the surrounding areas. I hail from Tarzana. I am periodically coming over here for events and watch tennis and enjoy going to the cafe. And I've been, since they started about 11 years ago, they changed, they transformed that whole food venue from this little, you know, nothing to, and they really elevated it and they brought some amazing food in and tremendous energy. And I think, I'm not going to reiterate all their other wonderful attributes that they've brought to the center, as previously mentioned, but I do want to read a letter from a supporter who is not able to be here. And this is from Michal Brison. I'm writing to express my wholehearted support for Atmosphere Catering during the upcoming city council hearing. As a loyal customer, I have used their catering services for various personal events, ranging from gatherings at the Tennis and Swim Center to upscale venues at private locations, and I have consistently had positive experiences. The team at Atmosphere Catering has demonstrated exceptional professionalism and a commitment to excellence in every event they have handled for me. The attention to detail and the quality of services provided have truly elevated each occasion, making them my go-to choice for catering needs. Moreover, I would like to highlight the outstanding experience I've had visiting the pool during summer open hours. Their wonderful team, always positively providing services which contributes to the overall enjoyment. In addition to my personal experiences, I am pleased to share that my 16-year-old daughter has been employed by Atmosphere Catering for catering events onsite and at various locations. The management's dedication to creating a positive and supportive work environment has made a significant impact on her overall job satisfaction. Their commitment to fostering a positive atmosphere not only enhances the customer experience, but also extends to their employees. I believe that supporting Atmosphere Catering aligns with our city's goals of promoting businesses that contribute positively to the community. I urge the city council to recognize and appreciate the positive contributions of Atmosphere Catering and consider their continued support in enhancing our city's events and experiences. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Michal Brison. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel, followed by Lana Stone.
Hi, my name is Rachel Warner. I have been a resident of Calabasas for 56 years. I have worked closely with the city of Calabasas, city council, and the Los Virginas School Board over the years. I've worked with the Talbert Family Foundation to run the Calabasas Classic. I feel that I have been an integral member of Calabasas and would like to offer my support to Atmosphere Catering. I've been a member of the Calabasas Tennis Club for the past 15 years, maybe more. I've attended end-of-the-season luncheons, which were every seven to 10 weeks that were catered by Atmosphere. Prior to COVID, we haven't re-entered that. I've been to tennis tournaments that have been catered by them. They supply lunch to the kids at the summer camps. All of my friends whose kids attend speak highly of the quality of the nutritious food that they serve and the variety of the meals. I have also had lunch at Calabasas Tennis Center, too many times to count. Dana and Nick work extremely hard to provide amazing nutritious food that is affordable. I'm asking that the city council votes to continue to work with Atmosphere Catering. Dana and Nick are some people that I see every single day and they are kind, pleasant, wonderful to people to be around. And I have a letter that this is not mine, so this is somebody else. This is Marcy Verity. And this is a letter to Nick and Dana Rowland to be read at the city council on Wednesday, January 10. I was devastated hearing that you have terminated, been terminated by the Calabasas Tennis and Swim Club. For many years, we have participated in many events and celebrations together, just to name a few. Relay for Life, Special Olympics, changeover in city government, Calabasas High School events, summer concerts on the lake, Chamber of Commerce events, Calabasas wine tasting, et cetera. of Commerce events, Calabasas wine tasting, et cetera. The contributions of your food and time back to the community advances tenfold. This is just what we have done together within the city. On a private scale, I have entrusted both of you and your knowledge of food and logistics to all of my personal clients over 20 years, all of whom have used your services many times over. As you both know, I have an extremely diverse group of different ethnic and racial backgrounds as my clients. When I can give them individuals who speak French, Spanish, Turkish, Hebrew, Farsi, Arabic, et cetera, it's a plus. This is my reputation that I entrust to your team at Atmosphere Events and Catering. Eleven years ago, I remember clearly how both of you put all of your eggs into the basket at CTSSSC, and went in and turned a disaster into thriving business, both for yourselves and the city of Calabasas. The city's thinking of termination sounds very extreme. I know firsthand of the conditions that you have been working in with half of a kitchen. Should this be the reasoning that things are unsafe? Why hasn't this been addressed and fixed? Your business is seven days a week. Then COVID hit. Yes, we all faced COVID, and the losses that caused business-wise. What did both of you do? I remember it all too well. You delivered home-cooked meals. That was Atmosphere Events and Catering going to the market, standing in lines, cooking and delivering to those who couldn't or wouldn't be able to go to the market themselves. We have done many things together, both business and personally. I really pray that the city of Calabasas, where I live, come into its senses and realizes what gems they have with Atmosphere Events and Catering."
Thank you.
This is my second letter. I have one line. This is not me.
Will you give it to our city clerk, just because we still have so many? Thank you so much.
I've literally bought four words.
Lana Stone, followed by Brad Raya.
Hello, Lana Stone. I'm from Woodland Hills. I'm the founder of Calabasas Med Spa. I met Dana in 2009 when we started working together. We were at the Calabasas Chamber, and we got along really well. And when she was offered this contract, she was so excited. They had like, I remember, three people, I think, competing for it, and she was so nervous. She was so excited that she was able to at least try to get the job. And out of those three people, they chose her. And ever since then, she's just been doing a really, really great job with it. And let me, I've known her, like, since I opened my first business in 2009. We met, we were very involved with the Chamber Commerce, which I just said, supporting small business owners. With my business and with Gabriella with Calabasas Med Spa, we've used her many times for catering. She's always very responsible. The food is always amazing. Let's see. I also belong to the Calabasas Swim and Tennis Center, and she's really turned the catering around there. And the food, it's always amazing. So I'm in support of continuing the contract with the city. I feel like they're a small business, and that's what the city of Calabasas has always been about, supporting small businesses. And I didn't know what had happened. I didn't know her contract had been terminated, and I'm really just devastated about that. I thought they just had other people, like they did before, that were voting for, you know, trying to get their contract approved, and that they were trying to go for the lowest person or something like that, trying to get the best deal. But I guess that's not the case. So if there was just one incident, I hope that you do reconsider that and look at the incident and go from there. And then I have a letter also. It says, it's from Natalie Klein. It says, "I hope this letter finds you all well. My name is Natalie Klein. I'm writing to express my support, as well as my appreciation for the services provided by Dana and Nicholas Rowland at Atmosphere Catering. I discovered their catering services through the Swim and Tennis Center. As a member of the center, I've had the pleasure of experiencing their dedication and professionalism on multiple occasions. In particular, I would like to highlight the support they provided during a challenging time. My children celebrated their bar mitzvah at the Swim and Tennis Center at the end of COVID. They delivered delicious food for the occasion, but they also played a role in facilitating the collaboration with the center's director. They also went above and beyond to help create a memorable and enjoyable atmosphere for our guests during a difficult time. Many parents reached out to me after our event, and I was able to connect them and have their celebrations there as we did. Furthermore, Dana and Nicholas have demonstrated their commitment to community service and support by extending generous discounts. During my time as president at the Parent Faculty Club at AC Stell Middle School, the two organized staff luncheons were delicious and exactly what the staff appreciated. Additionally, their contributions extended to a successful Calabasas High School fundraiser, where they created or catered our athletic department pasta dinner in significantly reduced rate this past fall. They are valuable team players within the Los Virginas Unified School District community. They have contributed generously to the well-being of our community. They have consistency displayed professionalism, kindness, and generosity. Their efforts have positively been impacted by-
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up is Brad Raya, followed by Carla Elkins.
I'm Brad Kaya. I'm a Woodland Hills resident, but I spend a lot of my time here in Calabasas. The reason I spend a lot of my time is because my daughter, who I thought was going to follow her brother to Chaminade, decided, no, I want to go to Calabasas High School because it feels like a family. Now, I kind of like started my life in Hollywood, and I slowly moved from Los Angeles out away from Los Angeles to be part of this community that feels a lot like my home, which is Northern California. And I think the reason it feels like that is because of the community, because of the family. And so when I hear that Nick and Dana, right, are in trouble of losing their contract, I think, wow, now we're tugging at the threads to this, like, sweater that is our community, our fabric, right? And so it really, like, hurts me because Dana was one of the first people I met when my daughter was at Calabasas Tennis and Swim as a five-year-old, right? She's ordering her lunch. There's Dana, and she's taking care of us. She's smiling. Nick is smiling. They're always fun. They play tennis, and Nick can kick my butt in tennis. And my daughter ended up wanting to go to high school here after a lot of tennis and Calabasas Tennis and Swim. And they, by the way, went to the CIF finals for the girls' Division II this year, so my daughter, as a freshman, played. A lot of that reason she got good enough to play as a freshman is because of Calabasas. So, again, the family feel that they help support at Calabasas, I think, is really important. And when I hear things like what the sheriff has to deal with, when people get punched on the street, and I think, man, those are some real problems. But let's not pull away at the good stuff that we have that keeps all of our feelings of community and, like, fabric and society together. And Dana and Nick are those people, and I hope you guys think about that. I don't know the circumstances of why they might be dismissed, but I think they should be given the opportunity to apologize or explain or do whatever it is to stay a part of this community. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Carla Elkins, and then Gabriella Vikrey. You're not, hold on one sec, Carla. After will be Vicki Tuckman. Okay, Carla.
Good evening. I'm Carla Elkins. I live in Woodland Hills, former Calabasas resident. I'm a Calabasas business owner. My kids go to, one graduated from Calabasas, one is a senior. And like everybody else here to support Dana and Nick and Atmosphere Catering, they gave my little snarky teenager her first job, and she really matured under their professionalism, even given some tricky conditions in the space. And I just can't say enough wonderful things about them. Her experience there was professional and nurturing, and brought me and Dana and Nick so much closer because of how they treated her. There are two letters here from people who are not present. I feel like there have been so many. I don't know that I need to read word for word, but Molly Fader, Rob Stone, two Calabasas residents who have glowing things to say about Atmosphere Catering and Dana and Nick, their food classy and professional service and catering services, warm and welcoming. I think we just all can't really say enough about how professional and how nurturing, and what an asset they have been to the Tennis and Swim Center and to our community. And we really hope you would reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you. And you can give the letters to our city clerk so that we can, okay, thank you. And our last speaker on this item, unless there's any more speakers, will be Vicki Tuckman. So if there's anyone else that wants to speak, please fill out a speaker card and give it to our city clerk.
Hi, my name is Vicki Tuckman, and I'm a Los Angeles resident. I know Dana for over 30 years, and I have watched as Atmosphere Catering has grown. I knew what it was like before they came to the Swim and Tennis Center, and I have watched them transform the Swim and Tennis Center. The food that you have at your facility far surpasses what you normally find at a comparable tennis and swim center in other parts of the city. They've brought a wonderful inventive venue, and the food is executed really, really well. I grew up in a catering family. My father was a kosher caterer back in New York, so I'm well acquainted with food, and their food is excellent. Their service to everybody is always very polite. They try to, expectations, to moderate expectations on food service. It gets very crowded sometimes, especially like on a movie night, and they keep their customers very happy. I have a letter to read from Dan Saharoni of Horizons at Calabasas. Dan said, "To whom it may concern, Dana Rowland and her company Atmosphere Catering have been working with us since our groundbreaking in Calabasas in 2012. She has been our exclusive catering company during that time, and they have done such a great job that we have contracted with them to do business and personal events. Dana has done a superb job at every event she has ever produced for us, and we wouldn't think of hiring another company. We believe that Atmosphere, as a locally owned business, should be given preference for Calabasas city events, not only because it promotes the local economy, but also because Atmosphere execution and quality of its services are unsurpassed. We heartily endorse Atmosphere Catering and would appreciate if the local city government would continue to use their services for the foreseeable future."
Thank you so much. And with that, I don't have any further comments on this item. We're going to move on to consent items, which, and then we'll take a break, so people that don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting. But this is approval of meeting minutes from December 4th, December 6th, December 8th, December 13th, December 15th, and December 20th, 2023. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull the consent item?
I do.
Okay.
If I can comment on it?
Yes.
I have three minor corrections and one comment. I'll be quick and brief. For the minutes of December 6th, on page 5, it says, "The motion carries 5-0, but only lists four council members voting." I'd like to have my name added to the list. On December 13th, on page 2, in the I's, it lists me as Mayor Pro Tem Kraut, but at the time, I was still council member. I wasn't Mayor Pro Tem until the next item. And got to get this one right. My wife's name on page 3 does not have an E at the end of it. The last thing I'd like to note is for the minutes on December 15th, the conclusion of item number 3 says, "After extensive discussion and review, the city council agreed to prioritize future agenda items as ranked by council members per their direction. Future agenda items, as currently identified, will be considered by group, with Group A items being addressed first, Group B, and Group C will follow." I'm not sure that we voted on them being discussed by group, although they were grouped there. We were going to take them in order. "The city council also gave direction to refer a number of items to respective council task force or city commissions." If I could just request, could we get a copy of which ones were referred to which commissions? Because those weren't attached to the minutes.
They're attached to your future agenda. They're listed on the future agenda report.
They're listed there.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Are there many, any, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on the consent item?
I have no comments, Madam.
Great, thank you. May I have a motion to approve consent item number 3 with the changes recommended by Mayor Pro Tem Kraut?
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I thank you, everyone who is here tonight, to share their comments. I want to take a 10-minute break before we move on to our next item. Now we are, now we are back for item number 4, which is Continued New Business. This is a long one. It is Adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1881, Certifying an Amended Final Environmental Impact Report and Approving a Statement of Overriding Considerations, associated with File Number 160003152, Analyzing a Proposed Development of a 77-acre vacant property located at 4790 Los Virginas Road at the eastern terminus of Agora Road, APN numbers 2069-078-009 and 2069-078-011. The proposed project, situated within a total development footprint of 11 acres, includes 1, a residential component consisting of 180 multifamily condominium units, including 18 affordable units, within 15 three-story buildings occupying approximately 9.5 acres, which is 12.3% of the property; 2, a commercial component consisting of a 5,867 square-foot retail commercial shopping center situated in two one-story buildings occupying approximately 1.19 acres, 1.5% of the property; 3, a .36-acre community green space park; 4, a permanent dedication of a public trail easement through the property connecting to open space lands to the east; and 5, preservation of approximately 66 acres, 86% of the site, as permanent open space. Ancillary features include the construction of two detention debris basins, site access, and internal roadway system with sidewalks and parkways, retaining walls, landscaping, future recreation areas and lighting. Development of this project would require a significant amount of remedial grading to stabilize a landside hazard area on the southern portion of the site. The project site is currently zoned, planned development, residential multifamily, which 20 acres per, 20 units per acre, RMF 20. Open space development restricted, OSDR, and is within the scenic corridor SC overlay zone. City Attorney Matt Summers is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor and council members of the community, as I think most people are aware, on November 27, 2023, Superior Court Judge, Los Angeles Superior Court, Curtis Kinn, issued a ruling against the city of Calabasas related to the city's denial of this project, the West Village project. The city had denied the project primarily due to safety and open space concerns. The judge's ruling ordered the city to allow the developer, the new home company, to build 180 residential units without further review or approval. As we know, the facts in this case have been challenging from the very beginning. State lawmakers have strengthened numerous housing laws, including the Housing Accountability Act, that have impacted how courts look at residential projects and made it extremely difficult for local jurisdictions to successfully deny housing projects. Mindful of that, those realities, and some further realities that our appellate specialist counsel, Mr. Robin Meadow, will touch on, the city council unanimously approved a settlement at Friday's closed session, last Friday, January 4th, and in that settlement has approved up to 76 single-family units instead of the originally approved 180 multifamily units. So just repeat that. It's a unanimous city council approval of a settlement that results in a significantly smaller project, up to 76 single-family units instead of the original 180 multifamily units. It includes an affordable housing component, which will be either approximately $2.25 million paid in in-lu fees that the city can use on affordable housing projects, or a maximum of four very low-income units onsite. That'll be at the developer's option, depending on how the site plan sorts out. In return, the city, the developer has waived the other monetary claims against the city, including approximately $1 million in attorney's fees so far, and claims for significant additional attorney's fees, plus up to $58 million in alleged takings damages against the city. All of that in return for approximately $3.25 million in certain fee credits against impact or in-lu fees, which is accounted for as the net would be that payment of approximately $2.25 million to the city for affordable housing if no units are built onsite, or the four units onsite. The city will use an expedited process to evaluate the 76-unit project, given the court ruling that it allows 180 units to be built now. And in that process, the city will still require standard development conditions, similar to the standard conditions the city imposes on any project, and similar to the conditions that were originally recommended by the planning commission for the hundred, for the original project, but adjusted to reflect the significantly lower unit count and to ensure the project is feasible. In particular, the developer has agreed to an added proviso that the retaining walls that, if needed, along Los Virginus and adjacent to the Colony Development, will meet the city's height standards to the extent feasible, and that there would be no retaining walls taller than those analyzed in the EIR. If the city certifies the EIR, as is the action on the table tonight, and then, then once an application is received for the 76 units and approves the 76-unit project, then the developer is expected to build that instead of the original 180-unit project. As noted, tonight's action would be for the council to certify the original EIR, which would be the basis for the environmental analysis to come of the 76 units, up to 76-unit project, which has to be within the roughly the same development area as the original project. I know folks are asking, "Why settle? Why not fight to the end of time and the end of the city's resources?" And the reason for that is because, as Mr. Meadow will explain further, at heart, we were unlikely to win an appeal. And we would have spent a significant amount of resources, likely more than the city could afford in the end, to not win. Hence, the directive from the council was, "Look at a better way. Find a better outcome than that." Hence, that was the settlement, providing certainty in exchange for a significantly lower-scale development, trading out 180 multifamily or up to 76 single-family with the additional terms and conditions. Additionally, as next steps, the council has directed staff to prepare and bring forward for voter consideration a proposed ballot measure that would strengthen our open space protections. That will come in a future meeting, not tonight's agenda, but that has been directed to move forward as a future step. With that, I'll turn to Mr. Meadow for some further information on the question, "Why settle?" Then we'll take our public comments from anybody as desired. Then Mr. Meadow and I can offer any further, answer any questions that have been raised. Then council comment, and then a vote, as council may desire. Staff recommends that the requested action is to adopt City Council Resolution Number 2024-1881, certifying the amended final environmental impact report and approving a statement of overriding considerations and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Thank you.
Phil, do you want to give him your mic?
Chuck, here we go. I'll start over. I've been a lawyer for a little over 50 years, and I've been practicing appellate law for just 30 years this year with a law firm that doesn't do anything else. The city brought me into the case to gain a perspective on it that trial lawyers don't have. The appellate courts are a different arena. They play by different rules. The personalities are different. The processes are different. And so I've looked at the case through the lens of an appellate lawyer, because the question we have to ask is, can we win? So I'll cut right to the chase. If the question is, "Is there any chance that we could win this case in the Court of Appeal?", the answer would have to be yes, because any case has a chance of success if it isn't entirely frivolous. But the real question here is, can the case be won on a basis that's acceptable to us and that doesn't involve the very substantial risks that this case entails? What is the real likelihood? And the answer is, is very unlikely. I'm going to try to spend a few minutes walking through some of the reasons. We have the legislature to thank for this in the form of the Housing Accountability Act. I've learned through this case that a better name for it is the Compulsory Housing Act. The legislature has made it almost impossible for local governments to disapprove projects like this. The reason is that the statute seeks to eliminate any form of subjective discretion on the part of government officials who have to approve the project. So a project can only be denied on the basis of something that is completely objective, and the standard is very strict. I'll read it to you. "Objective means involving no personal or subjective judgment by a public official, being uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official." That's a lot of words, but it basically says, "If it isn't in your rulebook in the most clear, positive language, you can't use it as the basis to deny approval." And in the real world, this kind of situation doesn't exist very often. Proposed projects can reveal problems that the local government didn't know it existed. And so, of course, there's no legislation to deal with it. Nobody thought it was a problem before. One of the reasons the city council disapproved the project was concerns over evacuation safety. Well, timing matters here. This project was submitted in 2017. The Woolsey Fire happened in 2018, much too late to enact any kind of legislation that would take into account the kind of problems that everyone listening in, I think, lived through at that time. Now, the Housing Accountability Act does have a provision that says you can disapprove a project for a health or safety reason. But to rely on that exception, the city has the burden of establishing, and I'll quote again, "First, a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact; two, based on objective, identified, written, public health or safety standards, policies or conditions; three," and this is the key, "as they existed on the date the application was submitted." There just isn't anything remotely like that with respect to evacuations for fire or any other reason in the Calabasas municipal code or anywhere else in any Calabasas legislation. And as I said, this application was submitted before the Woolsey Fire. So I've mentioned what the objective criteria have to be. There were none here. Now, we would have to make the argument to the Court of Appeal that the safety impact was so obvious and so obviously substantial that we didn't need those formal, objective, written criteria. And I expect a lot of people here and listening in would agree with that proposition. I think it's a pretty reasonable proposition, but it's not what the Housing Accountability Act provides for. How do you measure what is obvious? How do you measure what is substantial? We don't have the tools to do it with, and we don't have the tools to be able to persuade a Court of Appeal that we can do it. Another reason the city council disapproved the project was because, in the city council's view, it did not comply with Measure O that was enacted in 2005. That's the measure that says if you redesignate a property, you have to have a voter approval of it. One of the problems with that is that we don't have an explicit definition, Measure O doesn't have an explicit definition of open space. Now, I would like to think we could argue that we can, that open space means space in its natural condition, space that is completely undeveloped, unimproved, raw land, untouched. And that's a pretty good definition, and there actually are some statutes that say that. But there are statutes that say other things as well. And so how do we persuade a court that we have this objective, verifiable, by an undisputable source, definition of what open space means? We don't have that definition. And so I, as the appellate lawyer, don't have the tools with which to persuade an appellate court that it should reverse this judge's ruling because of a violation of Measure O. Now, there is one part of the court's order that's vulnerable, and that is the finding of bad faith by the city council. That, I think, is a fairly easy part of the order to attack, but the problem is, it doesn't do us any good in terms of eliminating the project. The bad faith finding gives the court, and thereby the developer, some extra power over the city, but getting rid of that doesn't affect the court's determination. The disapproval of the project was incorrect and had to be set aside. So there's really no value to the city in going after just the bad faith finding. So even though there are some appellate arguments that I'm satisfied I could make with a straight face, and if the case didn't have those arguments, I wouldn't sign a brief in support of the city, the fact of the matter is, we would lose. And I want to add that from a public policy perspective, the reason isn't that hard to understand, even though we may not like it very much. What the Housing Accountability Act says to cities is this: Cities, you have to give developers a clear, unambiguous measuring stick so that they know exactly what they have to comply with to get a project approved. Our problem is that we just didn't have that measuring stick. So we would lose. Now, it's a fair question to ask, "Well, okay, we think we're going to lose, but why not at least give it a try? You've said that there's always some chance of success, and I stand by that statement." The answer is that this is not the kind of case where the only risk you face is having to pay your lawyer to pursue the appeal. This is a case where the risk of loss can be catastrophic. Apart from the fact that you'd have to live with the 180-unit project instead of the current project, which is less than half its size, New Home has tens of millions of dollars of claims beyond just approval of the product, a project. Their attorney's fees that the city would ultimately have to pay are certainly well over $1 million. We would have to post a bond just to move forward. A bond that we're satisfied would be well into eight figures, 10, $15 million plus, which is a bond that if the, if the developer were to call on it, would almost certainly bankrupt the city. And the trial court's bad faith finding, if it stands up, exposes the city to multimillion dollars of fines if it doesn't toe the line exactly as the court demanded. So there's a lot to lose. We have gained something in the settlement, and Mr. Summers says we have a project that is less than half the size of what was proposed. It has, as I believe, no commercial component. For example, if we're concerned about evacuation, well, whatever impact the original project would have had, this one is significantly reduced. We get something out of this. We don't get everything we wanted. We don't want the project. We don't want the hill taken apart and put back together. But one thing lawyers commonly say about settlements is there are several virtues. One is certainty. Both we and New Home know exactly what can be done, and most importantly, we know it now, not after several years of litigation with an uncertain result. Lawyers often say that the best settlement is one in which neither side walks away happy. I think that may well be this settlement, and that is one of the reasons why I'm very comfortable that the city has decided to accept it.
Thank you. So with that, we will then turn to the mayor for public comment.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Cars, and I have, oh, hold on, I do have on person online. Mary Ann Rush. Please state your name and the city you live in, please. Mary Ann, please unmute yourself.
Sorry. Hi there, I'm Mary Ann Rush. I live in Agora Hills, and I used to live in Calabasas when it became a city and helped develop Wanda Enza Park. I have an article that says there's endangered plants, upland, oakland, savanna, and coastal sage scrub. And when this article talks about, it says we had an ancient landslide on this area. And even in your description, you say that there was a landslide. And earlier in some of the articles that said, talk about safety. I mean, can you really offer a piece of property for people to live on that is known for landslides? We've had a lot of the mountains come down when we've done, you know, drilling into the mountains. So, I mean, that's just my concern. And I thought maybe by playing up the landslide, historic ancient landslide, that maybe we could find a way to get out of this. I just really want to save open space. I really don't want this land built on. I'm thrilled that you got it down to 76, you know, a lot less houses, but, I mean, if we have endangered plants and we have had, you know, landslides in the past, and we've had a, three of them. I sent a letter a couple of weeks ago saying how we've had areas of Triumpho Canyon that came down. There's an area right there on Agora Road near Lost Hill Sheriff Station 20 years ago. The road was closed because it was so unstable. So I just thought that I'd bring it to everybody's attention, that we have had a lot of landslides. And I'd like to make sure that when these people, if they ever got in there, how would they get insurance on something that is a historic landslide area? So thank you so much for listening, and have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
I have no other public comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Now we'll turn to council comments. Oh, sorry. How could I forget?
Not a problem, Mayor. I did want to take some time to add for the council and also for the community some information that we have not been able to share up to this point, but I think as important as we discuss this item. In 2021, the city hired a grant writer, a grant writer that was recommended by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. With staff, we explored a number of opportunities to, for funding with the hopes and anticipation of being able to secure, if not one, but several grants that we would be able to use to acquire the properties. We looked at state grants. We looked at private foundations. We looked at, across the spectrum of those funding sources. And for various reasons, whether it was the, the cycle had ended or requirements of the grant, they did not fit. And so, once we exhausted those efforts, as the council is aware, and many of the public has participated in this as well, in the beginning of January in, in 2022, the city entered into a contract with the Criscom Company as a lobbyist to work with our legislatures to secure funding through the state budget process. This was a very ambitious project to start four and a half months before the budget is approved by the state. By compiling a wonderful team, council, the Conservancy, Criscom staff, we were able to pull off something that was quite amazing. We were able to bring in $5 million through the state budget process for open space acquisition. Additionally, the Conservancy identified another $6 to $7 million that would have likely been possible had some other things put, been put into place or played out. That wasn't fully committed, but it was a possibility. But even then, in the end, we were able, unable to put together enough funds to entice the developer to sell the property. And so, again, a special thank you to the council and our lobbyist, the Conservancy who worked with us. That $5 million is protected, and we are looking for other opportunities, but as I mentioned, unfortunately, it was not able to be used to, for the acquisition of the West Village property. We have also looked at working, we have worked with other private entities who have expressed interest in the parcel. To date, we have not been able to be successful in, in allowing that process to fully play out. And so we're, we're at an end where this settlement comes now to the council. I do also want to point out something that, and just follow up on Robin's comments. He mentioned the potential liabilities in the tens of millions. Our budget for the, for the current fiscal year at year's end, so in, in the next six months, we're expected to have about $14.5 million in our general fund reserves. That is a healthy reserve for our city, and there are a few other buckets of funds that are unrestricted that we And there are a few other buckets of funds that are unrestricted that we could use for different things. But again, even between $16 to $20 million, when thinking of the potential tens of millions of liabilities that the city could incur, the general fund and the other funds could not support such a hit. And so, I just wanted to share that information with the council. I appreciate our legal counsel and appellate counsel and their time on this. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn the time back over to you.
Thank you so much for the comments from Matt, Kindon, and Robin. Much appreciated. Now I'm going to turn to my colleagues. Mayor Protem Kraut, would you like to start?
I'm not sure what to say other than what's been said already. We have reached a settlement with the New Home Company. We're certainly in favor of 76 units over 180, knowing that the fire evacuation risk will at least be reduced. I'm still quite disappointed in the loss of open space and the environmental impacts that this project is going to bring to us. Nevertheless, we have looked at the environmental impact report several times. I've looked at it as a planning commissioner, I've looked at it as a council member. I'm quite familiar with all the details that are in there. And this amendment that's brought forth to us tonight would simply change the number of units, change the number of buildings, but generally keep the grading approximately the same. The rest of the impacts have all been addressed in that environmental impact report. So I see no reason why we can't approve this tonight. I would like to offer one last comment regarding the Housing Accountability Act, which is really what's put us in this position. And we, as a council, I'm hoping will be looking strongly at our building codes and making changes in the near future to make sure that we're not in this predicament again. But meanwhile, we need to look to our state legislators and those that are offering bills like the Housing Accountability Act that are taking away local control. The one-size-fits-all package doesn't work. What works in downtown San Francisco does not work in Modesto. What works in Modesto does not work in downtown Los Angeles, or Newport Beach, or the city of Calabasas. So I hope everyone that's paying attention to this issue today realizes where these handcuffs are coming from, and our solution is going to be at the ballot box in November. Thank you.
Thanks. James?
Yes. This, although it was not the outcome we desired, obviously, at the beginning of this, and obviously, we fought the lawsuit for a long time, this was the best possible outcome under the circumstances, and I support the resolution. I did want to mention a few things. I appreciate what staff has had to say, and I agree with most everything they said. I did have a few other things I did want to say tonight. First of all, my vote for this resolution is not a concurrence with Judge Kin's opinion, with which I have significant disagreement. It is not a concession of the constitutionality of the Housing Accountability Act or the housing element. I base this primarily, I'm not going to get into every argument, but on two things. From the admission of this state in 1850 to 2020, the state gained population every single year, every single year. From 2020 to the present date, we've lost population every single year. And we've now lost a net of 573,000 people in California. That's a net. There is no longer any nexus between the housing laws that require us to build just additional housing and the state's population trajectory. And it has no rational basis. Even if it did have a rational basis that the state could articulate. ... of a developer, in collusion with a developer, in the 2020 primary election here, in favor of Measure N, in which over $1 million was spent to force the city to bypass the city council. Fortunately, 78% of the voters voted no, even though the no side was outspent $6,000 to over $1 million. So because of that criminal conduct, they're procedurally barred from enforcing the Housing Accountability Act or the housing element here, which I consider null and void. And finally, I do not concur with the judge's decision that the open space initiative is deficient. However, in light of that decision, and fearful of the fact that it may in fact be decided that way in future cases, I do support bringing forward in the fall election an open space initiative, much as I did in 2005 and 2015. And what I'm hoping to do is that the council, in the very near future, will have a resolution as I did actually run the campaigns at the councils, provided me with the authority to do that, write the ballot statement, campaign on behalf of the council. In both of those elections, I would hope the council would again ask me to do that, and I would be more than happy, inasmuch as I'm not running in this cycle, to help lead that campaign once again. And I trust that it will pass again with between 85 and 90% of the vote, as it did the first two times. Thank you for allowing me to go on.
Thank you.
Very briefly, one clarification or key point to note, the developer who criminally colluded with HCD is not the New Home Company. It's a different developer.
Oh, yes, I did not mean to imply that. If I did, then, no, it was not at all the New Home Company. That was Avalon Bay, because I do want to name them. And the state actor was Zachary Olmsted from the housing HCD. So those criminal acts should be attributed to them.
And of course, any criminal conviction has to be in a lawful criminal court. This is not that, so that is all for a future situation.
The state is not going to indict itself, so don't hold your breath.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you. I don't know how many people have been through this kind of exercise, but it was really amazing. We have a lot of people to thank. Our council members, for one. We went over this in great depth, going back to the very beginning. We didn't like what was happening, and we fought it. And fought it by denying the project. Consequently, fought it in court and tried our best. Didn't come out the way we had hoped it would. And ultimately, it was obvious that there really isn't an antidote for this. We were hoping, through the help of our appellate attorney, Robin Meadow and his firm, maybe he'd find his silver bullet somewhere. We looked hard, we looked under every single table, we spent hours and hours, made every effort through every possible opportunity to be considered. I couldn't have asked, I speak for all of us, we couldn't have asked for a better team and association to try to fight this war. You know, things have changed in local government, we've heard this tonight. It's just a new reality. I'm very satisfied with the way this turned out. I'm not happy we have to say goodbye to our hillsides. Certainly, 76 is better than 180. We'll probably hear that a lot in the coming years. But I want to thank everybody for all your hard work. Matt did a great job. We just reached the end of the line, and I think the settlement and all the efforts that our mayor, when Mayor Shapiro was there, and our current mayor, worked so hard at meeting our advocates. And to come out with a solution like this is way better than we would have expected. I'm glad we're going to retain our financial status, and we'll move on. And as the future brings, we'll bring some measures up and tighten up our open space, and we'll learn from this. But at least it didn't annihilate us like it could have. So those are my comments, and I'm certainly in favor of this when it comes to a vote.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. Everything's been said so exceptionally well. I want to start out by thanking not just our city council, of course, and all the public who's weighed in, but a special thanks to our city attorney, Matt Summers, his team, and Robin Meadows, our appellate expert, I'll call him expert, because he certainly is, and of course, our city manager, Kindon Meek, and everybody who worked so hard to get to this point. We unanimously denied this project. We were, as you've heard, we were sued by the developer. The judge's opinion, we lost. And we didn't just lose, there was a finding of bad faith. Whether we, as Robin has indicated, whether we could have appealed on that one issue and had a likelihood of success wasn't the issue. The issue was, we lost at that point. It was 180 units ordered by the judge, plus potential monetary damages as well. We looked at the option, as has been mentioned, of an appeal. The chances, as Robin eloquently said, were not highly likely. I'm giving it a better bump than you gave it, but not likely, really unlikely. And the fact that the city would have had to post a bond far in excess, likely far in excess, of our general fund reserves, all were factors in coming to this decision. We've all said it, we wanted and did do our best to protect the open space, to do what the public overwhelmingly has indicated they wanted. We did everything within our abilities, as has been mentioned, the legislature in Sacramento, Housing Accountability Act, and the factors of the laws going on from the state are not things we can overturn or change individually. That's going to take a lot larger push. So while what we wish did not necessarily happen, it was, in my opinion, I think, the best alternative at this point, the best solution to the situation that we were in, we are in, we were in, let me rephrase that, to work with the developer. And I do give them thanks, because I know they will move forward in what they're going to develop on this property will be something they will be proud of, that will make Calabasas proud of that development as well. It won't just be a fly-by-night representation of putting something up. So I do thank them, because it takes three sides to come to a conclusion, two plus the eventual resolution. So I am in support of this resolution as presented.
Thank you. And I will conclude again by thanking our legal team and staff for all the work that went into this. This is a sad day for Calabasas, because this case really signifies the loss and really, like, the end of local control. Sacramento has overtaken authority on land use issues, and this case and project really symbolizes that. We listened to the community who was overwhelmingly opposed to this project for very, very valid concerns. Anyone who lived through the Woolsey Fire knows that fire risk in Calabasas is real. Our entire city is in a high fire severity zone. And this is something that, when you're a part of this community, you understand. And anyone who can argue that doesn't understand the fabric of this community. The protection of open space is something so valued by this community, and something that our council was really, really trying to protect. I mean, I really think we did everything that we could until the very end. And when we were told by the experts that there was really basically zero chance that we were going to win, and if we went that extra step, I mean, there was a risk of possibly, I mean, not bankrupting the city, but expending such significant resources with the chance of not winning, it wasn't something that we could have responsibly supported. So as hard of a decision as it was, the fact that we were able to settle for 76 single-family homes instead of 180 multifamily homes really is the best that we are going to get. Not anything that we're happy about, but the best for the community at this time and the least amount of impact to the neighbors. All that I ask now is that the developer of this project, once you become a part of this community, that you work with the neighbors and listen to them. And there are people that have been fighting this project but that live right adjacent to it and have a lot of questions and concerns, and that you be open to working with them to make sure that you're listening to them. That's something that's really important, and a lot of developers in our community have been very successful at that, working with the community. So that's something that I ask. As has already been mentioned, we're going to be bringing forth a new initiative to hopefully strengthen some of the open space protections. And it's really important, as has also been mentioned, that people advocate to their state legislators that there is not a one-size-fits-all approach for land use. And as really has been said, Calabasas is in a high fire zone, and that needs to be studied uniquely. It's not just like any other community. And we have representatives in Sacramento who need to hear from our local residents. Everyone does an amazing job at communicating to the city council, and now we need to take that energy and all work together to lobby Sacramento for protections for cities in high-fire zones. So I really hope the community can understand that this council tried everything to oppose the project, but collectively, which is so important, that we all came to the same decision for the best interest of the city. So if there are not any other further comments, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-1881, certifying an amended final environmental impact report and approving a statement of overriding considerations associated with File Number 160003152, analyzing proposed development of a 77-acre vacant property located at 4790 Los Virginus Road, at the eastern terminus of Agora Road, APNs 2069-078-009 and 2069-078-011. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is a unanimous vote to adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We will move it forward.
Okay. The next item tonight is informational reports, the check register for the period of October 28th through December 31st, 2023. Are there any questions regarding the check register? Any questions? Okay. With that, are there any task force reports? I'll start with Ed.
Thank you. I do have three task force reports to give everybody. I've got the Queen Power Alliance, they're going dark this month, so we're going to meet first week of February. I'm sorry. Yeah, we've got power for it. And our sustainability task force with Councilman Shapiro and myself, we've scheduled that for next week, I'm looking forward to that. And with Mayor Weintraub, we have our economic development scheduled, and that's going to be very exciting. We have some great plans ahead for this year. I wish it was this week.
Absolutely.
That's my report.
David?
Last night was the first of the year Mayor's Youth Council. Are you going to do that?
You can do it.
Okay. And it was a good evening, they have the Body Positivity Fair, and a surprise coming up next month, they're going to announce. And then Mayor Weintraub and myself met with the school task force, met with the Los Virginus Unified School District to go over, along with our city manager as well, to go over the new bell schedules, potential impact on traffic, construction, crosswalks, and the potential for discussion of basketball, baseball, youth programs, and joint use agreement as well. And I've had SCAG meetings, I'll have more SCAG meetings coming up, and tomorrow is the Valley Economic Alliance. And tomorrow is the Valley Economic Alliance Summit, will be attending as well. Thanks.
Peter?
Let's see, on December 14th, we had a Calabasas Community Center Task Force meeting. Lot of details coming together. Happy to announce that the public grand opening will be March 16th. Hopefully, everyone can join us. In addition, on January 4th, I attended virtually the Cal City's Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Meeting. We're just getting kicked off for the year, starting to monitor legislation that might affect those areas, and will be working with a committee to lobby Sacramento in favor of local control. And then finally, yesterday, I did have the privilege of attending the Calabasas Park Homeowners Association and spoke there on a number of issues predominantly relating to burglaries and public safety. Thank you.
James?
I don't have any.
Well, David gave most of mine, but I'll just add, I spoke at the Valley Economic Alliance. They had the mayors from all of the participating cities, so that was great. Learned a lot that was happening in other communities. Our COG meeting is next week. We had a December recess, and I will be attending the Valley Economic Alliance meeting tomorrow as well. Does the city manager have anything to report?
Mayor, just one item. I just want to acknowledge and extend our appreciation to our interim Assistant City Manager, Phil Lanzofame. This is his last city council meeting with us tonight, as his annuity hours end soon. We've really enjoyed having him with us. We love his experience, his wisdom, and he's been a wonderful asset to our city. So thank you.
Can I just add, you stepped in on a lot of really complicated issues and things that involve the public, and it was really seamless. Like, I'm shocked how little you've been here, and it seems like such a long time, because you really understood, I mean, all of your experience, but it was really amazing to have you around. So, thank you. Yeah, please come back. Are there any requests for future agenda information items?
I have one that I would like to refer to the Planning Commission if there's a second. Very briefly, it involves the Woolsey Fire overlay ordinances, which have affected Malibu Canyon, as development speculators have come in and bought some of the properties, and it's no longer a resident. There's issues regarding clauses in there that allow anyone to come in and buy, as opposed to our intent, I believe, was just residence. So I'd like them to take a look at that and see if they want to make some revisions going forward to the remaining properties.
I'll second that.
That would go to the Planning Commission, though, not to us first.
Right.
Thank you.
And the only thing I wanted to add, can we find out why the power went out yesterday in Saratoga?
Yeah, I can reach out.
Just, I mean, those are the issues that we keep talking about, just the power going out for no reason, and then lack of communication. So I know it wasn't a long while, but it was enough to impact people and just to understand what their reasoning was.
And for the record, it was two hours, and the report from the utility company was that the power is out with no explanations to why or when.
Oh, actually, I just got an.
I think Deputy Di Matteo has.
We just got an answer.
Yeah, it's a transformer. But we actually blew it.
I guess a transformer blew. So that would actually be another follow-up for antiquated equipment. Why are the transformers blowing so much? That we always said it was Saratoga Hills, Braywood, the same communities, we're having the same issues.
But also, communication is important. We just don't get a direct communication from them that's meaningful.
So let's follow up on the incident from yesterday.
Yeah, communication is important, but further evidence that the transformers are undersized, and we've been saying that for years.
Thank you so much. So if there's no other comments from anybody, we are going to adjourn this city council meeting to a regular meeting scheduled on Wednesday, January 24th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. We are adjourned. Are we back at City Hall in the chambers?
Yes, Mayor, the work is done. They're testing and training, and so we will be back in the council chambers as normal.
Perfect. Great, we're adjourned.